Okay. Teresa, can you mute your... mute yourself there? Yeah, thanks. Sorry about that. We'll get rolling right away. We had some interesting... I don't know what that was, but people were logging in and we're not quite sure what that was about. But this is kind of the era that we live in right now, navigating technology. And one of our goals that we'll talk about a little bit is to try our best to make the next couple of weeks as smooth as possible. Not that we're not going to have issues like this and troubles here and there, but we really want to make it as smooth as we can. So part of that is I have a few guests tonight. I'll talk about some schedule stuff and some logistic things. Teresa Gurletz, my assistant principal, she's going to talk about the home learning coach thing and some tips on ideal setups for the home and what we would suggest is kind of the best approach. Not that people can't be flexible with things, but just some advice from us about being successful. Jackie Renaud was here last week with Katie Ross, and she's going to talk about technology and some upcoming things and what you should expect and what you should see and some help. And then Cindy Holly is one of our teachers, 7th grade teacher, social studies, world history. And Katie Ross took you through kind of a general look at Canvas last week. But this week, we've been diving into stuff, and she's been developing her courses in Canvas. And so she's going to give you just a little more detail of what that looks like and what you will see as a parent and as a student when they're interacting with that platform. So again, trying to get more and more practical each week and just a little more detailed as we go along, step by step, so that again, the comfort level is good and people are ready to go. Again, one of my goals is to be as transparent and open as possible and let you know what I know when I know it. That everything and just asking for forgiveness, that a lot of this stuff is a draft as we go along. And then it can change, but we're getting closer and closer to locking these things in as we get near the year. And then also to let you know, if you see any teachers around or staff members around town, just to, if they, if teachers look really tired and like they need a weekend, they have been... They're in my 18 years in education, I think the last four days have probably been the most... Their staff has been given the most information as fast as humanly possible that I've ever seen. In education, there's always things that come and go. And we're all, you know, there's always things. But this has been really fast. And so they're diving into Canvas, they're diving into Edgenuity, working through technology stuff, trying to figure out all the details of how they're going to make this year great and trying to plan like normal, but with all these new tools. So it's been a lot. And they're doing, they're doing a great job, and we're trying to make decisions really fast. But if you see them around, maybe give them a hug if you know them well or at least a wave or maybe a gift card or something because they've earned it. So I just want to go through some of the things that have been coming up in emails to me and calls to me and also to teachers. We've gone through a lot of different things over the last few meetings, and you can see all of those. I link all of those in Parent Square whenever I send things out. Tonight, I'll go, I'm going to touch again on the Fox Online because I'm getting a lot of questions about that. I'm going to talk about quarters instead of semesters and kind of our approach there. Just touch briefly on attendance, taking care of business day. Those are done, but we have a makeup day. And then just some upcoming events before we get to staff and talking through some of those specifics. So one of the, one of the things that was decided a while ago to give as an option, which is good because I think everybody should have an option that they feel comfortable with, is registering with Fox Online, which is basically a separate program, but within Silver Falls School District, run by our teachers using the Edgenuity curriculum, but kind of locking yourself into an online-only option for the year. Just in case people weren't comfortable with coming back in person, if that was going to happen, if that just worked better for family structure, whatever it is, that you could opt in to the Fox Online program. And but just to talk about it a little more specifically, every Fox Online teacher is a Silver Falls teacher, but they may be in different parts of the district. And so the kindergarten teacher is from one school and the first, second grade teacher is from a different school. Six, eight teachers are from a different school all over the place, but they are teaching all of those kids in that grade level throughout the district, whether they're in their homeschool or not. And so our teachers, so I have two staff, one that teaches in my building and one that used to teach in my building but has been working at the district office. They are the teachers who are doing the six through eight. One of them is doing actually fifth and sixth, and the other one's doing seventh and eighth. And they will be running the Edgenuity program, the Fox Online program for all those kids in the district. And so they're going to be using Edgenuity, and that's the similarity. But the big difference is that they will not be following the schedules that I show you. So when we talk about the hybrid schedules and the cohorts and the live meeting days and all of that, that is really geared toward our Fox Hybrid kids that we have at our school. The Fox Online is going to function with the same curriculum and our teachers, but it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to look different. There's not as many live meeting times. Most of those meetings will be probably individual, maybe small groups, but they're really the kind of the facilitators and the managers of how your kids are doing in the Fox Online program as opposed to the Fox Hybrid, where our teachers are doing live meetings throughout the week and kind of mimicking what would happen if we went in person. So I just wanted to clarify that if that was still a question for people. And if you have any questions about that, now please let me know. Another thing with that is Fox Online teachers will be contacting your students individually and you next week. And so please be ready for that, and they can answer a lot of questions there. One of the questions that comes up with Fox Online also is they, they're not, they're registered with Silverton Middle School because we have to register them with one school, but you still have your spot in your homeschool. So if you're from Central Howell and you have to register with Silverton Middle School because of the Fox Online program, you still have your spot at Central Howell. You still have your spot at Victor Point. That hasn't changed. We just have to have one location where they're registered. And so I want to reassure people of that. And the other thing we've been looking into is a limited number of electives for Fox Online because there, there's no crossover into the middle school with electives. And so that is a possibility, but I don't want to give too many details because I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. And that really depends on the workload of those teachers. So I'm having them look into that to see if there's a couple of electives that they could give as options for kids to do fairly independently, but as an option for something extra, which we think is important. Sorry, let's get the head there. Another thing I want to address again, and I addressed it, I think, almost in every one of these town halls, but I just want to explain it one more time, is in the process of working on the master schedule for the middle school especially, we went through probably eight different versions, trying different things. But because of our size, it got really, really complicated because one of the, my requirements by the state is that I build a schedule that can work online, but then also work in person and keep the cohorts small. And, and so no matter which way I went, I either didn't have enough staff or I had too few staff or my cohorts were too big or whatever. And so the high school and I have a very similar schedule mainly because of our size. And it's basically taking the classes and compressing them. And instead of doing a semester, we do it in nine weeks. Now, it's not going to be, we're going to shoot for, for trying to get as much as we can that we normally would in a semester into nine weeks. It's probably not going to be exact, but we're going to try to be close. And part of the reason why they only are having four classes is because if we're doing that in a class, you know, like social studies or math, that's a lot of content in a short amount of time. And so that was one of the main reasons for going with just four classes at a time, keeping the variety of electives and things like that, but doing it in nine weeks. The other thing that's a little, it's similar to the high school, but a little bit different, is that if you have a high school kid, you'll notice that, say, they're taking Algebra I at the high school first quarter. They're going to take the first semester of Algebra I in that first quarter, and then they're going to go immediately to the second quarter Algebra I to finish the class in the first half of the year. I, we're not doing it that way. I'm breaking those up. And the main reason is because when we shut down and I was just picturing a kid like me, who wasn't really a math person, stopping math in March of last year of this past spring, and then maybe not having math again until second semester of next year in February. And it just felt like that was way too long. So this way, even though they're kind of broken apart, you, they're not waiting almost a whole year to take a class that they really should be in. So it's a little bit clunky, but we felt like breaking it apart like that could, we won't make kids go too long without being in the course they should be in. Somebody asked earlier today about that gap time. So we have something set up for kids to struggle to kind of fill that gap and some supports in between in the off nine weeks for a math class or an ELA. And then we're trying to generate some ideas about what to do for kids who just want to do more in those gaps as well. But those details are coming because we're trying to develop specifics with that pretty quick. Again, attendance, the biggest thing that you need to remember is that Monday through Friday, so even Monday, that's not very structured on our schedule, students have to interact with their class in some way, each one of their classes. And that could be as simple as logging in and doing a quick little two-question questionnaire or going to the AG meeting or whatever it is, but they have to interact with all their classes every day in a 24-hour period. So that's the flexibility. One, one date I want you to know, and I'll, I'll say this again at the end, is if you missed the three days of Taking Care of Business Day, the makeup day for that is September 9. And the real reason why the September 9 is a specific day as the makeup day is pictures. So we'll have the person back to take pictures. So if you want to get your student ID and your school picture taken and have the, your Chromebook and pick up an art kit and all those kinds of things, September 9 is your day, 9:00 AM to 2:30. And you can just come to the front office, and we'll take care of you there. If that doesn't work either, just call and, and we'll make time and get you all taken care of. So one thing I wanted to talk about, you've seen the schedule before, but now it has some times put into it. And I think it's pretty close to, to what I said before in terms of my guess at what the times would be. But one thing, and I've been talking to my teachers about this too, is I don't really want you to look at this as kind of a traditional bell schedule in that they're going to log in at 9 o'clock and they're going to be in class from 9:00 to 9:55, listening to a lecture the whole time. And then they'll have a five-minute break and then they'll have to be back by 10 and do that all day long. That's not the intent with this at all. I, I really want you to look at these as start times for their Google meets. And some weeks and some days, they could be shorter. They could be 10, 15 minutes. Sometimes it could be longer than that. Sometimes they could be a mix of discussion or just an open Q and A session or maybe a presentation by some groups of kids, whatever it is, or just an activity that kind of attaches to what they're already learning in their Edgenuity. So those are kind of creative times where teachers can connect with kids about what they're learning and help them. Cindy will talk about this later, but one of the reasons why the cohort, a positive of the cohort back and forth is that you take a, oh, so say Cindy teaches a first-period class of history, and that class has 30 kids in it. Because of the cohorting and the A and B day, when she meets with her group first period at 9:00 on Monday, she only has half of those kids. So she's only working in, at 9:00 with 15 kids, 13, 14, 15 kids. And then the next day, the other half. So they'll get a little bit more attention, which I think is important in a virtual setting especially. So this is an A cohort day where, especially at the beginning of the year, AG is going to be an important connection for all the kids in terms of getting them logged in and getting them ready to go in Canvas and Edgenuity. And we're going to do almost all of that through AG. So these AG meetings are going to be really, really important. And a normal week, they would have a kind of a big AG meeting on Monday, kind of set the tone for the week, maybe a short lesson. And then every day in the morning, those 8:30 meetings, as the year progresses, those will get shorter and shorter. At the beginning, they're going to be very focused on, have you gotten into Edgenuity? Have you gotten into Canvas? Do you know your schedule? Do you know that it's a, you know, that you know that it's Tuesday and you need to go to these classes? I mean, basic stuff at the beginning. And then as we go along, we'll probably mix more fun stuff in there and just focus on those connections. And those meetings will get shorter. But those are going to be really, really important. And then office hours in the afternoon that kids can schedule appointments with their teachers and lots of different options there. And then on their off days, they're still working on their stuff. They can have individual meetings with other staff or teachers or other, other kids. And they can just continue to work on their, on their stuff in those off days. And then, just as an example, it's the exact same thing, except this is just a B cohort schedule. And so their live days are Wednesday and Friday. One thing I don't have a lot of details with because I've mainly been talking to my staff about just courses and, and how we're going to structure things and all the nitty-gritty details of that, is we're going to have, at this exact time next week, we're going to have an open house of sorts. At this point, I think it's going to be where we do this setting and I have the sixth-grade team come on and each introduce themselves and talk a little bit about sixth grade. And then we'll do seventh grade and eighth grade and any other staff that I kind of want you to put a name to a face. And then we're going to, we're going to try to find a good time to fit in those personal connections with those teachers. We're just, we're just not quite sure where to fit that in smoothly, especially in a virtual setting. But one of those days, for sure, for your kids is going to be September 14. So in a one sense, we have to, you know, this year is real in the sense that we have, we're teaching new things. We have real grades. Attendance is real. And, and so that changes things from, from spring a little bit. And so we need to start fairly soon, but we also understand that we need to have a really, as focused and intentional orientation as possible. And so on September 14, we are going to focus entirely on that process. And so it's the first day of school, but it's really not going to be about content. It's going to be all about making sure they are ready for when content happens. And so we will next week start sending you some specific information about how to log in, what is, how to log into Canvas and all those different things. And so, but fast forward a little bit, we will send you, send your student through their school email meetings, meeting links, where they will go to their AG at 10:00. And for the 10:00 meeting with AG, it's very much a meet and greet, get to know your AG teacher, do some fun stuff. And then a little bit about what Canvas looks like. Then we'll kind of send them on their way and to explore through Canvas, take a break, you know, look back in Canvas and see some things in there. And then 12:00 is really going to be about, okay, this is what Canvas looks like. These are the tools within there. This is your schedule. Is everybody good with that? Maybe another task for them to do after that. And then 2:00 is going to be where they come back, and it's really about how they're feeling at this point. So troubleshooting things, maybe some technology issues, questions that they have. And either the AG teacher can answer those right away or those questions can kind of guide what they're going to talk about for the rest of the week in those morning AG meetings. So Monday is all about AG, but it's really, really important that students are there because if we can't get them onboard in terms of Canvas and Edgenuity quickly, then, then they'll, they'll fall behind right away. And so we need that. That's a very important day. And the AG teacher can step them through that. So, so as I have other people present, I'm going to start looking at the Q and A at the chat bar, and I'll answer your questions directly if I can. If not, I'll, I'll write them down and answer them at the end. And if we run out of time, I'll address them next week or, or an email. But definitely ask those questions in the Q and A, and I'll start interacting with that. Teresa Gurletz, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And then she's going to, she's going to share her screen and talk to you about some home learning stuff. Is that right, Teresa? Are you sharing your screen or are you just talking?
I'm just talking. I did shoot Maddie an email with an attachment. If there's a, she can pop that up there. But if not, I can also talk about it.
Okay, I'll give that to her.
And Maddie, that came from another person's email. But if you look in... All right, well, hello Falcons. So this is a, an attach...
Teresa, I haven't gotten any email.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. So Brett sent out, or Mr. Davidson sent out an attachment with one of his Parent Square communications last week that had an attachment. And we'll input again to make that easier to access. Some of the things that, as a parent and a community member here around town, I've been hearing from families is, what do I do now? There's so much that's unknown and so many questions. And so some of that helps to have something to do so that you can feel a little bit more ready for the school year as it comes up. And so we included, that's Learning Coach Tips about how to get ready for school. And the first link on that handout is a link to a document that the district has put out that kind of describes almost, there you go, thank you, the job description for what a learning is and what they do and some of those things. So it's important to kind of take a look at that. We understand that the majority of learning coaches are likely going to be parents, but they can also be a neighbor or a grandparent or some other adult that is in your kiddo's life that has the time to be able to vote to that. Kind of ordering their, your students through the school piece. And this handout's broken into some different parts. Kind of the first part is general. And for this getting ready part, it's more kind of garnering resources and ideas so that if you hit a wall or stumble once school starts, you already kind of have some of those pieces in place so that you're not scrambling at that point of going, oh, my gosh, what do we do now? And so in the, in the general part, just taking a look at that description that the district put out, who is a learning coach and what do they do? Part was helpful to the parent who has two kids here in the school district as well was looking at some of the time estimates of what does this look like during my day as a parent of how much time I'm going to vote to my kid. And I want to reiterate that there are estimates and that those time pieces, time commitment for the learning coaches are also going to have a lot to do with the type of student that you have in your house. Whereas my son, I'm certain, is ready to apply to be a teacher in the district and is ready to just take the lead and, and help lots of people. And where my daughter's going to need somebody here and helping her read and understand some of those directions and where to go next. You as a parent or guardian are going to know those are general estimates. So don't look at those and have a heart attack or listen and go, sweet, we've totally got this. That's great. Know that that is on your student. So if you're a hold of them. So we are taking care of business days where you got to get, have your schedule. So you're going to be checking their addresses and kind of getting that as a risk list, but then also taking, you know, look at who are my support people in the pool. So, and this comes from the Counseling Center. And some of the pieces, if your student is on IEP, having the case manager's information nearby. You've got me, that's on your front desk that are frustrated and trying to find information that the information's, and makes it much harder for you to find. Most important, and I know that Jackie did a super great job during the Taking Care of Business Day is checking in with families about access. They're going to do it every day.
Hey Maddie, I think your connection got bad. So let's, let's transition to Jackie.
Back, I'm back.
Oh, you're back.
Yep. So just touching bases with secretary so that they can help me that you have internet at home. There's parts later about school logistics, making sure you have the technology in your home, supply lists, discussing meal plans, what that looks like. And then some of the, you would be doing if it was a regular school year for preparing your students. So putting that gradual transition to bed to bed on time and getting, and actually leaving the bedroom, getting dressed, maybe considering a shower once or twice a week. And in, in this time, it's, it's good technology with your kiddo. I know that when we did my technology pickup with my kid, it felt like I was driving through a candy shop with my kids that left without buying them or giving them any candy. And it hurt my heart a little bit as a parent. But you know, this is where we're at right now and it's okay to acknowledge that. But then also look at what are we doing this year? What's something that we can be excited about? And so that we're focused, that good stuff as well, while still acknowledging that it's a little bit funky. So we're hoping that with some really great tips and learning coach support once a month, looking for some ways to, to provide that support. We know that coaches might not necessarily train as educators. And so we want to help and partner with you as much as possible to make sure that you feel ready to be that learning coach for your student. So that's a little bit about that handout.
Thanks Therese. Okay, Jackie, who, if you came to Taking Care of Business Day, was that spot number two? And she was really, really excited to see everybody. So she got a lot of good feedback and about, she just is going to talk to you about next steps with technology.
Okay, so last week, when I talked with you, I just, I kind of left you with two things that I really hope people will continue to consider buying. And one of them is just earbuds. These are great little earbuds. I think I got them at high school pharmacy for about eight bucks. They're school candies and they've got the mic. And these have saved me because it helps me isolate my work environment. So I don't hear as much noise around me. And then also the microphone so that you can hear me clearer. And that would help with the kids as well. The other one was the cups. So I found these the other day. These are great ways to say, you know, if your kid is learning and they are on a live meeting or they're working hard. Maybe they put the green or they put the orange cup up saying, you know, I'm working, don't disturb me. Gives them a little bit of sense of this is, this is your learning. You know, you need to take charge of it. That's the one unfortunate thing we have going on in the system right now is it is going to be, they need to rise to that occasion. And I think middle school students definitely have more of those skills than the younger ones. Green here, no, come on over, chat, whatever they want to do. But I'm planning on using this at my own home. So these are some two, two good kind of little tips. Easy, we can get it done. I'm all about getting something done because the last few days has been a lot of work, but I have to tell you, I love checking out the devices. Saw over three hundred, probably six hundred faces and it was so nice to see everybody. Because I'm a teacher, because I like the kids. That's pretty much the reason why I'm there. So you guys can see right here, I, I wanted to show you a couple of different things. This is a screenshot of, actually a photo that I took of a Chromebook that you may have checked out from us. Some of you might start with that screen where it says sign into your Chromebook and ask for an email or phone number. What that is, is really it's the, the username the kids have always had. Now they had it at Robert Frost, they'll have it with us and they'll have it at the high school. It's something that they have actually been given to when they first enroll in our school as kindergartners. They might not have accessed it, but they had it. Now that number follows them until they, the day they graduate. And so it basically breaks it down into eighth graders begin with twenty-five, seventh graders twenty-six. Oh, excuse me, that should say twenty-seven. Yeah, that's, that's a typo. So sorry. So it's your graduation year. And so mine, if I was a student, my graduation year was nineteen ninety and I would go Jackie dot JA because that was my maiden name. And so everybody else's is at student.sfsd.us. So you would put that in there. And again, it's the structure of it is their graduation year, their first name, a dot, first two letters of their last name. And then everybody else in the whole district have the same ending, at student.sfsd.us. I tell the kids, it's kind of like going very narrow with you and coming out with you being a student at Silver Falls School District in the United States. So that's what the SFSD and the US stand for. So you're going to have those three dots. Sometimes kids will not be able to log in because they're missing a dot. It's, it's basically a typo. Most of them have this. What they forget is their password. And the password is simply a zero at the beginning with six digits in the middle. And that six digits is their lunch number. And then they follow it with an SF. So that's what I did as an example of zero, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then SF. If your student forgets that, they can email me and I can access that information and get it to them. I kind of did that with all the people that I gave computers with yesterday and the day before and the day before that. It's like, email me if you've got questions. I've had, I think I've troubleshooted with about six to seven people already, which is what I want to do. I want to do that now. I don't want to do that next Friday. I want to do it now. I want to be able to triage people and get them in, get this technology up and running. Now, you could see that screen or you could see this screen. And in this case, you see my name here and sometimes you see a ton of kids on the other side. That's fine. All you have to do is go add a student, add a person. And that add a person screen will allow you to go back to this one and put that information in. Okay? So once you're there, this is just one other thing that I think is super important. It's very practical, is charging your device. Not becoming, not being able to be successful because your technology is not charged is really that person's responsibility. Technology as in the wifi is out, the teacher can't get connected, that's out of their hands. So we want to give them things that they can control. And one of those is clearly charging your device. So when you click on that, that cursor down below, you might see on the bottom right-hand corner, the battery. I always click on that and I can see a couple of different things. First, I can, I can turn on my volume if it's for some reason not working and it was muted. That's one of the many ways you can turn the volume up. And also the, the thing underneath it, it looks like, it looks kind of like a sun. I always thought it looked a little like a gear, but my glasses. You can turn the screen brightness up as well. And the last thing is really that percentage. You see the date and next to it says ninety-four percent. You want it at that when you start your day. You want it ninety percent or higher. That tells me that I've supposedly got nine hours and twenty-six minutes that I can use this computer without having it be plugged in, which is great. You also got plugins, so you can still be using your computer and have it plugged in. But a lot of times they do go other places with it. And so in order for it to be ready for learning, we should have that charge. Okay, this other thing, this other bit, I really encourage you guys to have your kids do it as soon as possible, which is email their teacher. And part of it is, is kind of them taking control over it. And, and when you get logged in, you, you have this waffle and I don't, I hope you guys can see that. I moved my little thing over here. This waffle on the bottom or the top right-hand corner, I call it a waffle when I taught the kids at Robert Frost. It's also a three by three grid. You click on that and then it drops down a whole bunch of stuff. You want to go to their Gmail account. Have them go there. You can see my Gmail account is massive. I don't use this. This is something from a long time ago. So there's a lot of emails in there. Some of them are just junk. You can have them clean it up or whatever. Either way, you hit that compose button and it pops up with this new message. This is a great thing for you to encourage your students to do. Now I, when I did it, I just pretended I was going to type a letter to myself. So I put R E N in, just three letters, one letter, two letters, three letters, gets you closer and closer to your object that you want, or your person. And you can see right here, I've got Avery Renaud, that's my son, is graduating this year in twenty-one. Myself, and you can tell the adults in the system, they don't have a number before them. My daughter, Paysha, twenty-four, is going to be a freshman. And then Renell is an old, as a, as a colleague, a friend of ours. And then we've got an old student that's probably has a disabled account, to be honest with you. I can't imagine I would be able to email him at this point because he's no longer a graduate. He just graduated. Okay, so that, those are, those are some things you can get into. Once you type it, you click on that person's name. And then you're able to write to them. Now I encourage the kids, and this is part of, see some, say for instance, like Falcon Success. This is one of the skills we'll be trying to incorporate into it is how do you write an email? How do you ask for help? We've taught kids that for years. You raise your hand. You might go up to the teacher. You, you do all sorts of things. Well, we're physically not there. So this is one way you can ask for help. This is something that you can do at night when you've really struggled with the assignment. You shoot that teacher an email. She wakes up the next day, she sees it. She's able to kind of get a little background in and then go to that student, whether it's an individual meeting or not. So you can see my, my, my daughter, I, I gave it a subject heading. Always good to remind students to do that. Maybe it says, I need help or assignment seventeen question mark. Whatever it is, the teacher gets to see that text, that, that box first. And that will alert her to get a little bit deeper into it. And then I just had something silly to say to my daughter. And then I, again, I ended it with who I am, first and last name. It's really important to include both of those. I know on my list right now, I've got about a hundred and thirty kids not including my AG. So that's a lot of kids. And considering that, over half of them are sixth graders who I remember from Robert Frost, but I definitely don't have that relationship I have with my seventh and eighth graders. I would like to see that first and last name. That'll help solidify who they are for me. Those are just a couple. And I'm really hoping that these are easily attainable tips that aren't overwhelming because we don't want to overwhelm, but doing little by little before the big landslide comes and the learning starts. This is just one way I would really recommend you having your child reach out to your teacher. And by all means, pop in, put a little blurb on the bottom from, from you. And so that they can see both you and your child are together in this learning, which we all are. And we want that, that best structure that we can. And that is you and I and your, and your child. So those are just a couple of tips. This is my last thing I'm going to give to you. And again, this is my email. I welcome your questions technology-wise. I am part of the Falcon Success Group for sixth grade. I am currently learning that as well. So some of those questions, we might not be able, really strong answers, right? But we will get there. Now, I do know the slip of paper I put in with the Chromebooks. We're going to add something new in that student's email soon. And it most likely will be from the AG teacher, and that is how to get to Canvas. So just be, be aware that that will be coming. So encourage your student to check their email because that's the one structure that is consistent from this year to, or from last year to this year. And that's, that's all for me.
Thanks Jackie. And again, general technology questions. Jackie's a great person to go to. Not to give her more than she already has because she does a ton. So next is Cindy. And Cindy is going to be giving you a picture of what Canvas looks like. So go ahead, Cindy.
Hello there. So my name's Cindy Holly and I teach seventh grade world history. This year our course is going to be called Eastern Hemisphere. It's kind of cool. So I'm going to share my screen with you. And what you're going to see is a vision of a Canvas homepage. So this is the homepage that I've kind of created. So when my students log onto Canvas and they're like, what are we doing today? This is what they're going to see. This is kind of a fun project people did to personalize. It was if they wanted to make a little scene, little information about what our course is going to be doing. And then there are, you get into kind of some buttons that you can push. Some might have more buttons than others, but we are all organized by week so that kids can kind of access, what do we need to be doing this week? So the idea with these buttons are, huh, you know, it's October eighth, week four, I better find out what's going on. You can click on that button and then it will take the students. And then you see right at the top, this is week four. And so we as teachers will be putting information in here for what the kids need to know to do that week. So it kind of directs them right to what they need to do. These are called modules in the Canvas system. There's also two other places they can reach the modules. One is right down here in this one, it says learning modules. And this one just takes it to the top and you can kind of see week one. These are some things that might be going on, week two, and you can keep kind of scrolling down. Some other features that are helpful are these buttons down here. And so you're going to might be wondering, one of the things that's really different from spring is when, spring, when we went distance learning, we knew our kids and we knew how to relate with them. And so this time it's like, who is this, who are my children's teacher? Who is my teacher? And so you can click on that link, that button, and you will be able to see. I did like a little welcome video that might be there. So and then people might have things written up. That's a nice spot to go. Another spot, just where you can kind of learn about the courses would be to go to class resources right here. If you click there, you've got some pages. You can click on class syllabus. And so for my class, I've kind of put in some information about what we're going to be studying this first nine weeks. I put in some information about where they can find things, materials that they might need in class. Kind of an expectation for, that they're expected to come to the live class. And then I put in a little, it's a general idea of what our class might cover each week in case kids are wondering, what, what are we studying? What are we doing in this class? I kind of have that there. Again, it's brand new, so we'll see how the timing will go. But that's an idea of what you might see in the class resources tab. There's the school schedule. There's a handbook there for information. So that's just kind of like general information for school and that particular class. So that's a handy button. If you need help accessing Canvas, you'll be able to access this button. There are several items that our district has put there. Once you get in, you can explore that. And anything, if your kid ever misses, if your student ever misses a class, we're recording every class that we teach and we'll be posting it right on here. So then your student or yourself can go back in and see what was going on. If I need to rehear something, if they were sick, they can go, click on this one and then they can view all of the recorded meets and we'll be posting those right here. So another neat feature on the homepage is the Edge Ingenuity access. So most of what your kids are going to be doing is going to be happening through Edge Ingenuity. I feel like Canvas is kind of an information site, information about the classroom. The assignments are going to be through Edge Ingenuity. So you can click on this button, perhaps it'll take you to the Edge Ingenuity site. We're not logged in there yet, but will be. And if you don't see that button, you can go over on the side here and you can also get to it through here. So there's a couple of different ways you can get to most things in this page if you just keep investigating. Up on top, there's an announcement up here. So when a teacher has like something happening, like remember quiz on Thursday, something like that, you'll see that information posted up top. So hey, we have an open house next Thursday, same time, same place. So we hope to see you there. You'll be able to click on the announcement and then you can get more, a little more information. Okay, Thursday, September tenth at seven o'clock. Sounds good. So that is just kind of a general idea of what a page might look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. And one thing about it is everybody, we're trying to be fairly consistent with our pages in terms of really focusing on weeks at a time. But then each of them will look, they have their own flavor to them, which is good. It's just like walking into a regular classroom and, you know, it's, it's organized, you know, what you're learning for the day. But everybody, everyone, every teacher has it a little bit different, but not so different that it's confusing. And so Cindy's pages have, have those buttons right there. Other teachers' pages will have kind of the modules on down the page. But what we're shooting for is just ease of use for kids when they, when they log in because we just want that process to be easy. So I just wanted to give you a good picture of what one class looks like right now. And then we'll just, we'll just keep doing this so it seems more and more familiar. So thank you, Cindy. So the last thing, last thing I'll show you here is our important dates. And I kind of made the ones, sorry, I need to share my screen. And I'll get there. So important dates, the ones that are smaller obviously have passed by. The one I didn't put that we just figured out today was the, the ninth is the makeup day. But then again, you can, for Taking Care of Business stuff, you can just call the office and come in. And then next Thursday, we'll, I'll introduce almost all my staff and they'll talk through some things. And then October fifth, again, is that date that we decide whether we're going to shift Fox Hybrid into in-person or not. And then the end of the first quarter is November thirteenth. And so the schedule that you have right now, that your students have right now, will be what their schedule is until November thirteenth. And then we'll rotate to their other four classes for the next nine weeks after that. So obviously we'll be in communication about that as we get closer. But those are kind of our big things. And so hopefully this was beneficial to you with technology and hearing from Therese and hearing from Cindy. And we will be in contact a lot next week about steps to log into Canvas and, and get those things going before we get to the first week of school. So really appreciate it. If you have any more questions, just shoot me an email. But appreciate you spending the time, having a, having a look at what we're going to do this year. So excited to, excited to get started. Thank you and have a good evening.